I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Can you do it? The roll call thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys know, but we've muted, so I can hear nothing.
Comment.
Is that better or anything? Yeah, better than I thought.
Okay, your roll call?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call, Blazi?
Here.
Darland?
Here.
DeCherl?
Here.
Hannah?
Here.
Hoover?
Here.
Jordan? Murray?
Here.
Nolan?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
A present, one absent.
Thanks.
The minutes of the regular meeting that was held on December seventeenth are attached. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I need the motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Anybody have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We do have a few presentations today. I'm gonna turn the tables over to the administration. There's some academic achievement that we're gonna go through to get the meeting kicked off.
Do we have a student report? Yeah, we'll have the student report.
I'll do that first.
Hi, my name is three-year old Caprati and I'm doing student report tonight for junior high sports and junior high and other sports. Season has come to an end and the overall record for both teams is ten and ten. Congratulations to the girls on a great season. For junior high boys, the seventh grade team graduates two of three and the eighth grade team's record is four and one. As for varsity sports, the boys' JV basketball team has a current record of seven wins and eight losses. The boys varsity basketball team's current record is eight and seven. At the Mount Vannas tournament, the boys swing with Lunsie and Empire Pet on a summer season center. Lost to Lunsie and won against Annapolis. Their next game is tomorrow, May at Southway Resort. I'd also like to congratulate Tucker Blaski for getting athlete of the week for this week. Lucas King also got athlete of the week for January sixth and Ryan Moore for eighth for the week of December twenty-second. The girls JV basketball team has a current record of zero and seven. The varsity girls basketball team's current record is three and thirteen. Their next game is tonight at Southway Resort. And I would like to congratulate August Hardy for getting athlete of the week for December thirtieth. The junior high wrestlers' record is zero and two and the boys varsity wrestling team has a current record of three and zero. Their next match is today against Cannon. Congratulations to Colton Wade who beat the SEHS record, highest win record with one hundred and forty-six wins. Colton is currently twenty-six and two for the season. Colton also got athlete of the week on January thirteenth and Tucker Evans for the week of December sixteenth. Girls varsity wrestling's record is currently one and one and their next match is Thursday, January twenty-third at home against Line Mountain. Congratulations to senior Kayla Fowler, who is currently fifteen to the state from the weight class for a first-year wrestler that was very impressive. She was also athlete of the week on December ninth. SEHS hosted two coaches versus cancer events during the varsity girls and boys basketball games last week where they embraced approximately over eighteen-hundred thousand dollars in accounting. On January eighth, FBLA went to regionals at Pennsylvania College of Technology where they competed against sixteen other districts and followed that to qualify for states. First place winners were the team of Matt and Freeze Dominic Maratti and DeShawn Shively. The team of Keon Penella, Steve Koschak and Marty Ziegler. The team of Jenna Eberlin and Maddie Leonard and Brayce Allen was also first place winner. Second place winners is the team of Bruno Day, Violet Freeze and Tori Maratti. Third place winners was the team of Amber Kelly, Laura Minner and Victoria Samuel. Stephanie Eberlin is also third place winner. The fourth place winner was Lily McCarthy and fifth place winners was the team of Gabby Evans and Bailey Smith. For events happening in the school, the quarter ball was supposed to come to Sunday, January twenty-sixth at Eagles Bay Country Club from six at nine. Newspaper is collecting donations to sponsor the Highland Herald newspaper. The senior class is selling R2O candy bars until the end of next week. Ski club will be selling popcorn starting on January twenty-fourth. And on January twenty-third, there's sore field trip to go roller skating at Trump. Job on board for students on turn and ten sore cars to go on the trip. There's a sort of set up event on January twenty-fourth for students who have maintained good behavior throughout the second part of the period before Washington.
That's it? Thank you. Great report.
So, and now the high school and elementary principals are going to present students who have excelled academically in the PSSA and the Keystone testing. This is something that we used to do in the past and we're going to start again. So, if I could have them.
So, each year, students in grades three through eight are required to take the PSSA exams. And the students have four areas that they can score in: advanced, proficient, basic and below basic. We want our students to be achieving at the proficient or advanced level. That means they're learning what we expect them to learn and meeting state standards. So, what we want to do tonight is recognize some of those students who were able to receive advanced in all areas. So, grades three, five and six are tested in only math and English, as well as seventh, I'm sorry. And grades four last year, and it's changing, so that's why I said that, and eight are tested in math, English and science. We're also gonna be recognizing students, this was not done in the past, but I think it's important. Students in grades nine take biology Keystone exams and algebra one, sometimes in eighth grade, but Keystone exams in algebra. And then they take a literature Keystone exam in tenth grade. And those are things that they have to be proficient or advanced in to meet a pathway to graduation. It's two, using those test scores allows them two of five ways to meet a pathway towards graduation, which is a graduation requirement. We're gonna recognize students with the Keystone exams that have been advanced in all three tests. So, if they're not in eleventh grade, they can't receive it yet because they haven't taken all three tests. So, we're gonna recognize those students as well. So, Ms. Kayla, if you wanna start at the elementary school?
Yeah, absolutely. So, wanna acknowledge the outstanding academic achievements of the following students. So, when you hear your name, come on up and receive your certificate and medal. Clara Saba Roynick. Keller McCarthy. Sampson Penella. And we have two other elementary students who are not in attendance this evening, but certainly deserve the recognition. Edith Barker. And Brody Peterman. Awesome job, everybody. At the high school level, for excellence and achievement at the PSSA, we have Quinn Penella. We have several other students who were unable to be here, but for recognition, for achievement for the PSSA, I also have Kylie McDonald. For the Keystone exams, I have Jenna Eberlin. And I also have Ruby Malkemis. As you can see, from students in grades three through twelfth, we have a senior with the Keystone exams. It's not a lot of kids, so it is not an easy task to achieve advanced in all areas. So, another round of applause for those students.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations. So, we'll go through administrative reports and then I know we have Webster's Fitness. I think what we'll do is go through the administrative reports. We do have some public input, in case they don't wanna stay through the entire program. And then we'll move over to you. That way, you don't have to sit through our entire program either, if you don't want. It's pretty exciting stuff, but we'll get you out of the way in the beginning. So, we'll just go through the administrative reports. Anything here? Hopefully, by the time. You said nothing.
A couple things I just wanna touch on that I put in my report. What I wanted to announce is that the quality induction is scheduled for February fifth for varsity boys basketball game. The committee is choosing to deduct five different quality and stuffy. So, we reactivated the quality after it was started in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. They had one induction with five nominations and then they have not. So, we have been working towards, we're starting, we have five people selected to be inducted on February fifth. We also happen to know Webster's Fitness this year, who's been working really hard to come up with plans for the new weight care facility, which we're really excited on. If you haven't been over there recently, it's huge drive and, you know, a hard, um, beginning. And I just wanted to congratulate hopefully for beating the win record, he's got one hundred and forty-six wins and twenty career losses, so that's the weight range. Congratulations.
Thank you. Dr. Zwadi?
I just wanted to highlight two things that were in my board report this month. One, we are prepared for the Pennsylvania alternate state assessment. The testing window is different than the PSSA and Keystone assessments, but all of the rosters have been uploaded and everything's prepared for that test. That has a longer testing window because the tests are given individually to students. This, again, is our alternate state assessment for students with the most significant cognitive impairments. Second, we have, we've been working really hard preparing for the cyclical monitoring that the state does. They come in to monitor the special education department once every six years typically is the, is the, like, the monitoring schedule. So, they will be onsite in February, but we've been, you know, putting a lot of effort into that. I've been asking these guys for a lot of records, there's a lot of documents and a lot of things are called and preparing for them. But we should be good to go if they're onsite, visit in February, but I'll update you more on that.
Thanks. Mr. Evelyn?
I have a couple things I'd like to add to my board report highlights. First of all, I would like to congratulate Michaela Bedford, she is our most recent January student of the month. I'd like to congratulate our FBLA participants. We have nineteen that are headed to the state competition where they will compete to head to Nationals, which is in, I believe is Anaheim, California, it's in California this year. So, they're pretty excited, a few of them have been to Nationals in the past, so they're very, very excited for that opportunity. I'd like to once again thank our award recipients today, that is no easy task to be advanced in all the areas. One thing that I forgot to add to my board report is, when we administered the Keystone exams, the biology retest exam in December, we were audited by the state, which you don't have any idea when they're coming. They come every so many years. They have not been here since we have been administrators, me, Doug, Sam and myself. Randy has been lucky enough. Oh, Doug was in that room. And we were, we passed and had no red flags, no issues in our testing, so that was kind of a relief too. Those are the first time we were tested that way, so that was, that was a good thing. The last thing I'd like to do is send our condolences from Sullivan County School District to the Wadley Six School District and the family of Matt Rory. Matt was a teacher here less than two years ago and was here for several years and our lots of prayers go out to his family.
Thanks for that. Ms. Kayla?
I just wanted to highlight in my board report that all of the elementary classrooms are being featured on WIQ on the radio. We reported every classroom doing the pledge of allegiance. For those of you who listen to WIQ every morning at seven AM, at seven AM, they start morning off with a classroom doing the pledge. So, we had a hundred percent participation. They started on Thursday, so they will be running as of last Thursday through the beginning of February, if you wanna hear some of our students. And they also will be archived on their website, if you missed it. Other than that, I have.
Thank you. Mr. McMahon? Mr. Mavis?
It's a busy time of year in the business office, finishing the AFR, completing the final activities that our auditors require of us. Anticipating having the audit back from Baker Tilly in mid-February. And so, that's, yeah, that'll be a good, good thing to have wrapped up.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Linder?
I've provided a report in your folders. I have nothing beyond that.
Thank you. We will move on to public input, if no one has any questions about the reports. Robin, we have everything, Robin filled out the paperwork. Over to you.
Thanks. Hi, my name is Robin Fink and the first thing I'd like to speak about is the multiple deaths that have been occurring in the boys locker room. While of basketball, I am, two of my boys, both of my boys that are on the varsity program have had both money and their H2U's dress shoes stolen from the locker room, one of them while they were at practice, the other one during the game. And I also know of another basketball player that had money stolen from him back in December during the tip-off tournament. As far as my son's money goes, his locker was not locked, but his money was in his wallet, in his pants, in a clothes locker. So, somebody actually went in there, went rooting around the lockers and saw that his was open and took it upon themselves to take his money. My son's H2U shoes were not locked up as well, but they were sitting up on top of the locker. I understand we can't have any cameras in the locker room, but who's responsible for monitoring the locker room? We thought that the locker room door in the hallway that leads into the locker room is supposed to remain closed and locked unless a coach or someone is standing there monitoring it, but it doesn't appear to be the case. I did talk with Katie last weekend and she immediately responded about the boys locking their stuff up, which I do agree. But, and that we cannot keep that locker room door locked, at least from the hallway standpoint. But who's supervising the kids or the adults or anybody from entering the locker room from that area? Because it wasn't just during the practice, it was also during the game, you know, that items had been stolen. So, if anybody can access that, you know, anybody can essentially walk into the locker room and, you know, just take things. And my son's shoes, they were wet because of the weather, and so he didn't wanna put them in his locker to get his dress clothes and other things in the locker wet, so that's why he stuck them up on top of the locker. And there are also other items on top of the lockers that he said have been there for a little while. And since it was during a game, he figured it would, you know, there shouldn't be any problem because they're the only ones that were supposed to be in the locker room. What if the kids have items that can't fit in the lockers, like what are they supposed to do? Where are they supposed to put their stuff? We also host games with other schools and they use our locker rooms and keep their stuff in the lockers, which obviously aren't locked because they don't have any, you know, locks for our lockers. So, who's making sure that nobody's accessing either of the locker rooms when we host events? Or what about when our kids go to other schools for events and use their locker rooms and put our stuff there? Like, are those locker rooms secure? These are just some questions, you know, that I have, especially with about our school, like what can be done to help prevent this? I know, you know, the kids should lock their stuff up, but they also, my kids, I guess, also felt safe enough to put their stuff in a clothes locker with my son and his money and go in for practice and then come back and not have to worry about it. And then my other one felt safe enough to put, you know, his shoes up out of the way and that nobody would take them.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. The one thing that we can, I think we probably can offer is that just recently, we've started to do an assessment on the, just the doorways and just different assessment that Officer Reeves is evaluating, just facility-wide. And I think this is probably a good bolt-on to that for him to look at. Without getting into too much specifics, we, the committee met last week and we, you know, it was open forum, but we started to assess some of these things. It was, did not include what you're describing, but it was more about like accessibility, what doors are open, what doors aren't open, how do you get in and things of that nature. I think, unless you guys have other thoughts, we definitely need to respond to this in regards to like, you know, what do we do? How do we communicate it? But I think it might be a good idea to just bolt that on to Officer Reeves' assessment of access.
It's nothing new. When I, back in nineteen ninety-eight, I had my locker broken into a hundred and fifty-dollar pair of spikes, gone. So, this is nothing new.
I just wanna comment, I did, was working with Robin, Officer Reese and I, when the money was taken during practice, we looked at video for all practice time to find out who was in the gym or who was in the locker room and who came out. It was not a lot of kids. We probably spoke to with both that one and the other one that was taken during the practice. Twelve kids tried to get information. It's hard, you can't have cameras in there to check in. And one kid was in there for thirty seconds to get his phone because he needed it to time something at practice. And another kid came down there to use the restroom. I'm not sure why he had to come all the way down there because he asked to get to the locker room. But we even reached out to a family to see if they could find any of these things at home, just in case that person did. It's just hard, you can't have cameras in there. The lockers all have locks on them, so even the empty ones have locks on them. So, an unlocked locker may present, but there are lots of kids that don't lock their lockers during practice, so that's not, it's not a thing.
And all the coaches have been made aware of these issues going on, so we have to try to keep the doors closed when all the teams exit, so that people aren't just going in there one at a time. I also hope to facilitate that, obviously I can't go in the voice on her, but I told all the coaches, we've involved your coaches and you don't let kids in this locker room if they need to go in after practice has started, somebody needs to go in. And the door I was referred to was the outside door, that one is still locked, but any students that are in the gym can access the boys locker room through that door that goes correctly into the locker room. That was, I was referring to, that was a little more difficult to lock, secure that one. We can, though, if they've committed, but we have to work hard with the coaches and force them all to monitor that really well, hopefully don't let kids leave in practice.
Alright. Robin, appreciate you bringing it up. Circle back with you.
I have something else too, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
The other item that I have is, I've been involved with various sports programs for my boys since basically two thousand and seven, since they started sports. Various positions, I've been a taxi, I've been a team mom, concession stand worker, scorekeeper, coach, even served on beer. So, I understand the challenges for each of those areas. Well, one thing that they all have in common is that you're there for the kids. So, we try to do what's best for them in whatever program it is or the sport that they're in. You recently didn't hire the girls varsity basketball coach and hired one from outside of the county. And I've heard various stories as to why you didn't rehire, I mean, after all, we live in Sullivan County and, you know, stories kinda spread like a wild, wild fire here. So, but my question to each of you as a board member is, do you guys feel like you did all that you could to investigate what the issues were? Did you talk to the other coaches, team members, parents? We as taxpayers voted you into the positions because we felt that you would do your best for the kids and the school and whatever programs that, that were involved in. I have friends in Hughesville and a couple of them are actually involved in the girls' basketball program. One of them is the varsity head coach of the program. And it really disturbs me that he came up to my husband and I while we were at dinner to talk to us about the new varsity girls coach that you guys have hired. And he told us the issues Hughesville was having with him and that Hughesville had fired him. And he also said that he recommended to us to not hire him. He told us what the issues were and lo and behold, it seems to be the same issues that we just recently discovered with him as well. So, my husband had told the AD the next day and his response, you know, was that she wasn't involved in the decision and was kept in the dark. But isn't it her position to oversee the sports and the coaches, like she is athletic director, so shouldn't she be involved in those kinds of decisions or discussions? My husband also contacted the board member that weekend and was told that there was an investigation done with the new coach and, you know, that nothing had come of it. You know, what type of an investigation? Unless it was an actual conviction, you wouldn't find anything of what possibly had gone on in any type of a background check. Were various people or school district contacted, was taking the word of another school district, Hughesville, not enough to question you guys for hiring him? Even though I have all boys, my family is close to. Even though I have all boys, my family is close to a lot of the boys and girls throughout the school. And it really disgusts me as a parent and a voter, like just this whole situation. Like, did we take a step further to report any of this to P.I.A. double A? Because I know he was a referee, I'm not sure if he still is, but why wouldn't we want him, you know, anywhere near, you know, any other girls? And these poor girls on this basketball team. I feel so bad for them. Some of them are seniors and this is their last year playing school basketball. And what an experience that we gave them. Some of them quit at some point due to various coaching issues. Others stayed and were subjected to the new coach's actions. But in the end, you know, our administration, our board, you know, hired this guy and this stuff happened to our girls. They put him in a position to be groomed, to use the Hughesville coaches' words to us. Majority of you have children in our school district. Put yourselves in the shoes of the girls' parents. You know, imagine if one of your kids came home and told you something like this happened to them or was going on with the team. You know, you as board members, like, I don't know, like, I'm ashamed as a parent, like, I'd be ashamed as a board member, like knowing that this happened under my watch and from my understanding it was brought to someone's attention. Whether it's sports academics or other areas of the school, personal feelings should be set aside and you should be doing what is best for majority of the kids in the school district. You run into issues, you know, certain parents might not be happy, certain kids might not be happy, certain days might be one-off situations, you know, which I fully understand, but you need to be looking at the bigger picture and seeing what is best for, you know, everybody involved, especially our kids. You're the ones with the power over the decisions of our districts. I'm not sure that you guys realize that. You guys are like the deciding factors of everything that goes on with our school. Part of your job is making our kids feel safe and I really don't think that you guys did that with our varsity girls. So I just really hope to see a better job for this in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Robin, for speaking out. I don't think we really want to dive into personnel matters with Mr. Kimball, who is the coach, was the coach. However, one thing I, I can say is that the district went through, now, as you guys well know, because you've been part of all the programs, the application and the interview process for a board is based on the committee and it's also based on the board members that can attend at that point in time. So all positions, just to clarify a few things, it does not include every single board member at all, at all times. The board eventually has the final vote. As for, just to clear up a couple of comments, Katie's comment about not being involved, I'm not really, I don't fully understand that one because she was involved with every step of the way. The second piece is, the Hughesville was contacted, so again, without getting into specific personnel matters, whatever, we can't control comments, conversations at dinner, misformed information, information that might be true, might not be true. But I do know that the district went through its due diligence process with all of the coaches that applied. And then though, that, that data was taken from the athletic committee, recommendations made to the total board, which is the process, and then the vote, it went to a vote.
Let's get clear on what Hughesville provided, which is not what you said they provided. Let's be clear. They did not provide that, Jack.
No, I mean, we went, we went through the process of reaching out.
What did they present to us, Doug?
There's nothing to report.
Exactly. They didn't give us any of that information. They withheld it, which they're liable. They could be liable for that.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing that they are taking a risk at, at this, at this point is for them to, you know, we doc, it's documented that our district did their due diligence and checked references. If they're actually misinforming us during that timeframe and then circling back after the fact saying, oh, they, we were informed, that's a totally separate conversation, but we contacted prior other districts to, to do our due diligence after, like you said, if there's no convictions going through a, a background check, you, you could miss something in regards to people's behavior, because that doesn't track behaviors, but it tracks convictions or criminal records. So we did go to past districts and also he was a P.I.A. double A rep for, or ref for, I don't know how many years? 13 plus, 15 plus years. All right? But thanks for speaking out. It's nice to have public comment, good or bad. There is no need for an executive session at this time, so if there's no further questions, we move to finance.
How did you want to do the aesthetic?
That's right. I forgot about Webster. You do not want to sit through the rest of this, so have at it.
Thank you for allowing me to come in. My name's Jim Schmuss. I'm with Webster's Fitness Products. I'm our sales manager for Eastern Pennsylvania, New Jersey. I'm based out of Ambersburg, PA. We are a Pennsylvania-based company in our 37th year. We provide fitness equipment and weight room equipment solutions to high schools and middle schools. I met Katie originally back in March at the Athletic Directors Conference in Hershey. We're corporate sponsors for TESADA and also the State Physical Education Organization. I put a little kind of introductory, introductory packet together for everybody. Just a school client list, a little brochure on our products and our Co-Stars information, so you get a better idea of what we're, what we're about. But again, I met Katie back in March at the Athletic Directors Conference. She told me that you guys were building a new facility. She was nice enough to invite me in in July, so I've been working with her since July on putting together some ideas based off of what Katie envisioned and her coaches had envisioned the room being. So they gave her a list. We, we basically put some ideas together, went back and forth. And what I'd like to do is show you a 2D layout of the room, which is obviously almost complete, and then do a walkthrough, a 3D walkthrough of the room to get an idea of what it looks like. We really put an emphasis on strength conditioning for the kids, kids, athletes and non-athletes alike, and making sure that, because obviously you've got multiple teams. Chances are you don't have one strength coach that's running the entire program, so each coach is kind of responsible for strength training for their particular team. So we really wanted to put an emphasis on what each coach needed, what Katie needed to be successful, and also making sure that each coach could basically run whatever philosophy they had on strength training in the room. Any questions before I show you the layout and the video? So give you an idea, top left hand corner is the entry. So they're walking in the room. On the north wall, we've got five pieces of selectorized equipment. Selectorized equipment is weight stacks, pins, same thing with the unit in the middle. We've got multiple stacks connected with a pull-up bar. On the west wall, we've got a couple dumbbell racks with dumbbells and adjustable benches. Number seven is a kettlebell rack, number six is a back extension. We minimize the cardio in the room and really emphasize more of the strength conditioning part of it. We do have a couple treadmills, 16 and, sorry about that, and 17 or some fan bikes, so whether they're wrestling or another team, they can use interval training on those. On the, I guess we call it the east wall, we've got power racks with some platforms so the kids can do some free weight movements, whether they're benching or squatting or doing powerlifting movements or Olympic movements on the platforms. And then the number 11 is a Smith machine, so that's more of a fixed bar that's in the unit that'll go up and down. We want to make sure when the kids came in, either on that upper left hand or upper right hand door, entry door, that they were coming in and being able to walk around the room efficiently and not get, you know, not, not basically interrupt anything that could possibly going on, like team training, things like that. So to give you an idea, we, we always do a 2D layout. We, Pennsylvania alone, we've probably done 300 installations in the state alone for high schools or middle schools. We partner with Matrix Fitness, which is the manufacturer. They're currently the number one commercial fitness manufacturer globally. They actually have a, which I told Katie about early on, they actually have a distributing warehouse in Wilkes-Barre. So it's easy for us to get product, get it out quickly, and they've been great with supporting us and vice versa. Again, we, we've got a great partnership with them. We handle their products exclusively, meaning nobody else sells their products except us because of our partnership. Any questions on the 2D layout? So I'll show you a walkthrough of the room, which is a 3D, and I'll show you some customization that Katie and I worked on to brand the room. So we went with school colors, ice silver frame color and a red upholstery, but this will give you an idea of what the room looks like. So that's that north wall. Couple pieces are able to do dual movements. There's your Smith machine, there are your racks with the platforms. Small cardio area. And your dumbbell area. So when I'm putting together a room, I'm sorry, and you have the middle eight stack, what we call an eight stack. So when we're putting in the room, we obviously take, take in a lot of factors. Obviously, the size of the school, what sports they have, making sure that it's a totally inclusive room. So with that, we want to make sure that everybody can use it. So those racks that were on the east wall, those power racks and the platforms, they're each going to come with a couple different options for bars. Not every student can handle a 45-pound bar, at least not yet. So every station will have a 15 or a 30-pound bar, so they can obviously graduate from that. The female athletes are able to use that also. Dumbbells, Katie and I were talking about this in our office. You know, my recommendation is always 5 through 50 pounds. Anytime somebody puts in heavier dumbbells for 50 pounds or hog, they're going to collect dust. Kids are going to use those lighter sets, so we want to have multiple sets so multiple teams can be in there at one time. She just took me into the room. It looks great. It looks awesome. We're hoping that obviously we can work with you guys on it without, you know, sounding too cocky. We're, we're really good at what we do. Full service, full installation, we handle everything. And I'd be Katie's contact during the entire project. Any questions on the three, Katie? You got one other thing to share?
What about maintenance? Think if something breaks?
We handle the service.
Thank you.
So if, if the install happened, it's all done, I'll meet with Katie. We'll talk about, okay, who's, who's the main contact in the school, meaning who's going to make that call? Because you always want to have just one person. If you have 10 people, it's going to go crazy. So what I do is I create a service contact sheet and if, say, a treadmill's having some issues, I'll walk through Katie, okay, call this number, make sure you provide the serial number and what you think the issue is. They're usually there between 24 to 48 hours. If they can figure it out over the phone, they'll bring the part or they'll come and diagnose it. So with, in that area, we've got actually a lot of different options. Matrix has direct reps, service reps, and then we have some companies, third-party companies that we partner with that is an option too. So if Matrix can't get to it direct, we have one of our third-party, third-party people that will come and take care of that.
And what do those rates look like?
For that, for that room or the service?
No, the rates for the services.
It's all under warranty for three years parts, three years labor. So anything happens under that umbrella, it's all taken care of. Just got to get the right information so they can diagnose it correctly. Everything's warranted.
And after three years, what's the rate?
I don't have an answer to that, but I can find out for you.
Jim, do you do, do you have a purchase and lease programs?
We do, we do. If, we don't have schools that do a lot of that, but it is always an option because I think, and I think your business manager could probably tell me, there's probably a lot of other things that are leased in the school district. So you can, you can, no?
We usually own our equipment.
Okay, so usually what I always suggest is anywhere from a three, four, or five-year lease, dollar buyout. So at the end of the lease, you can, you just own it. It helps you spread out the, obviously, the, the cost over those amount of years. So it is an option and I can, if, if Katie okays that layout, I'll put some numbers together, get it to Katie, and then I can always have our, our leasing partner put together a lease quote for municipality. Municipalities get great rates, so I can, I can give that to Katie if she gives me a thumbs up on the land.
Yeah, because without digging into the weeds, I have a couple of friends that have, they, they gyms that do lease. And then you end up, yeah, they're, they're all clubs, but they end up with all the state-of-the-art equipment because it's just this revolving.
Yeah, yeah. Usually most of the time it's the cardio that's leased every three years. So if you, if you see a Planet Fitness, a place like that, or a YMCA, they'll always lease the cardio every three years.
And then purchase the other?
Yeah, and purchase the strength. If, if, if it's all, at all possible, you don't want to ever lease strength equipment because of how long it lasts. I mean, there's, again, if, for budget constraints, obviously you can do that, but usually the cardio is always the, the high-end piece. But the, the pieces that you have in there, only four, two of, I mean, the, the bikes will last really forever. The treadmills, you're just going to have to worry about the wear items, the belt, maybe the, the actual console. But again, we'll take care of that. Last thing I wanted to show you was just some customization Katie and I went through. So those racks, we went with 70-inch nameplates, correct, connecting the racks. I, I'm a really big believer in school spirit, branding the room, making sure the kids come in, they're, they're excited about it, they're proud of the, of the room and making sure that, you know, obviously they see the school colors. We can do anything that the school district wants. The only thing we would need in order to put other options together is just the correct logo and whatever you want to say in the font. So that would be the, the nameplate. Closer look of that. We do a head wrap. And I did bring, give you an idea, I did bring a sample that you guys can just kind of pass around and look at. I did Marywood University. So our competitors do a lot of screening of the logo, so it's just a color screen, boom, boom. We import it. It's a higher quality, it'll last longer. Again, same thing with the logo for the head wraps with nameplates. We can do any logo that you want. You just got to send us the correct logo, the correct format, and we can create anything that you want. Any questions?
Just, you know, if we have kids that are recovering from an injury, obviously the heavy weights aren't going to be that. What sort of, some of the cardio potentially could be used for that to help them recover, but is there other stuff to help kids recover from an injury? Have we gone through Steph on any of that stuff?
Yeah, that's, Steph had recommended the cardio for recovery purposes.
So the, the equipment on the north wall and the entryway, the selectorized pieces, the weight stack, they're, they're generally used for, also used for rehabilitation purposes. So if your athletic trainer has any athletes that have knee injuries, ACL injuries, they're going to, that person's going to rehab on those particular pieces. They can use the leg press, they can use the leg extension leg curl. Rehabilitation for the ACL is just hamstring, quadriceps, and calf, so you're going to be set in that area. So not only will the kids that are injured be able to use the room, but any rehabilitation purposes will be obviously fulfilled in, in that room also.
Katie, my question's for you. What are we doing for the kids that don't necessarily want to lift weights? They're more into like stretching and toning and stuff like that. They're more into like stretching and toning and stuff like that.
So those types of equipment, I believe you could incorporate some of that in my budget. If you're looking for exercise balls, or foam mats, or jump ropes, we do have some jump ropes and items like those.
Okay.
We also have the, how should you guide your sheep? How should you guide speed back from our weight room that's still in really good shape that we have? So there are areas to upgrade. I might not just these are items that I don't believe I would be able to, as a whole sum, building a weight room. These are items that, you know, I believe you would use now.
I just want to make-
What I have talked about was grind and mat is where our, is that teachers, they would like to incorporate some of that class into this one too, so we gave that.
Correct use.
Yeah, how can we make sure we build a weight room to work with a whole set of classes in it? Not just the people, but maybe like through the stations, maybe the circuit training stations where they do stuff in the gym, and then have the students maybe in the weight room, everything can be rotated from the stations. Looking, putting that equipment in there so there's enough space that many people can be in there.
Right. I just want to make sure that we didn't forget about that part of it.
Yeah, yeah. Those items I really might consider.
Any other questions? So Katie has the video. If any of you want it, she can obviously forward it to you. I'll stay in contact with her if, you know, the layout needs to be changed at all, and then I'll wait for Katie to tell me, let's price this out and see where it is. When she does that, I'll make sure that I get a lease quotation with it too, so you have that. At least that'll be an option for you, but everybody has my, my information. Eight-one-six is my cell. You can text, you can email me if there's any questions that you have after I leave or something that came up that you guys forgot to ask me. But we'd love to work with you. Again, this is what we do. We're the longest-standing Pennsylvania-based company in this category. We love working with schools, and we're hoping that we get an opportunity to work with you. It's going to be a great facility.
Thank you.
I have one more question. What's the turnaround time from like, yes, here, we're going to do this, to like signing a contract to delivery instead of?
So the customization adds a little bit to it, so I would, I would, I like the pad dates because you don't know what's going to happen with the installers. So if, if, if you work back twelve to fourteen weeks, which is more than enough, we should be good from the time that we get the purchase order until installation, I'd say twelve to fourteen weeks. But that's not to say your room will be ready way before that. If I say, hey, Katie, the equipment's done, it could be done in eight or ten weeks. It's, the biggest, the biggest holdups would be the district has to approve the customization for the nameplate and the head wraps, what you want to, what you want to use, because we're not going to start anything until that's approved. Once that's approved, that adds just maybe a week or two to it. So I feel comfortable with eight to ten, but I always tell twelve to fourteen, hey, something happens. Whether something happened with building it, I'm into padding dates.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Take it away.
All right. Finance, A, finance committee recommends acceptance of the following reports provided at the meeting. One, treasurer's report number six. Two, capital reserve fund, December. Three, capital projects fund, December. Four, capital fund, December. Any questions? I make a motion.
Second.
Motion, a second. I am a, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
B, the finance committee recommends approval of the following check registered at December budget summary. The total was two million, two hundred fifty-two thousand, ninety-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Questions on any of this? Cyber school cost compared this period is one hundred thousand, six dollars, four hundred sixty-nine and eighty-four cents. Kind of want to call intent to that.
That's the register on January twentieth, and that's, I've been separating out those bills and putting them in their own register the day before the board meeting, just so it would be easy for, for members of the public and the board to observe what that, what that monthly cost is for the district.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, I so move.
Aye. Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
C, the finance committee recommends approval of the following payment request from MHE Engineering. One, MHE Engineering Services, nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Two, eleven B Electric, Gold Electric, payment number four, forty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-three cents. Three, Milns, payment number twelve, two hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and forty cents. Four, Milns, payment number thirteen, three hundred seven dollars, eight hundred eighteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Dixon AC and R, payment number twelve, forty-seven thousand, three hundred forty dollars and twenty cents. Six, eleven B Electric, payment number five, twenty-four thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. Any questions? Okay, I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. No questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Okay, D, the finance committee recommends approval of requests from Sullivan County Tax Claim Bureau to examine delinquent taxes for parcel zero-one-dash-zero-five-step-dash-zero-zero-three-four. And I so move.
Because we're going back on the tax rules now, probably? To go sell it, admire?
Second.
Motion, a second. Further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
E, finance committee recommends acceptance of a donation, a swim stationary bike from the Geist Heisman family, valued at three hundred dollars. I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
F, this informational, the IRS, reversible mileage rate in two thousand twenty-five is seventy cents per mile of three cents and sixty-seven cents in two thousand twenty-four. Key information, the bid threshold is now twenty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, and the quotes threshold is twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars. And that's it for finance.
Just had a quick further question on the bid threshold. Who sets the, who sets the threshold?
State.
Yeah. Yeah, we always make sure that we read it into the minutes so that if anyone, regardless of grant or bid or has any involvement with the school district, they know what that is. And then you'll see, like, in, we will actually update the title, one, one of the ARs that has the bid threshold, just so that everywhere it shows up, we're compliant with it.
It's good practice.
And then in May, we approved the cooperative purchasing agreements where those organizations have already gone out and done the bidding process for municipalities and school districts to, and you don't, like, if, if you see a purchase above that bid limit, but we didn't go out for a formal bid, we should have documentation associated with that purchase, like the CO-SARS contract that it's under, or a PAPM agreement. You may recall, like, two years ago, when we were purchasing servers, we signed up with the Texas Intergovernmental Purchasing System, TIPS, because they were the only vendor that worked with the server vendor that we needed. So lots of technology products are, are under those cooperative purchasing agreements.
And those companies act as consortiums, and they go through the bidding process that complies with all the state regs?
Okay. Just clarification, everybody. Thanks to the Geist Heisman family for the donation. If there's no further questions, move to athletics.
Okay. A, athletics and health committee recommends approval of the coach-mentor program. The coaching mentors will be selected by recommendation from the athletic director in conjunction with the administrative team for approval by the board of directors. I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
B, the athletics and health committee recommend approval of the addition of Joseph Fitzgerald to the list of approved volunteer coaches. And I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
C, the athletics and health committee recommends approval of the list of junior high girls' basketball coaches, which completed the twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five seasons for the twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six school year. And I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried?
D, the athletics and health committee recommends acceptance of a letter of resignation from Patrick Kimball as the girls' varsity basketball head coach effective January twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
E, the athletics and health committee recommends acceptance with regret of a letter of resignation from Alexis Randall as junior high soccer coach effective January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
F, the athletics and health committee recommends the appointment of Jason Dickinson as the interim girls' varsity basketball head coach for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five season, retroactive to January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
G, the athletics and health committee recommends the appointment of Ellen Koschak as the interim girls' varsity basketball assistant coach for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five season, retroactive to January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
H, the athletics and health committee recommends the appointment of Glenn Vaughn as the coach-mentor for Jason Dickinson and the girls' varsity basketball program for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five season, and I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Aye, the athletics and health committee recommends the appointment of Shawna Stick, coach-mentor for Brandy Tolgetzky, hopefully I got that right, and the varsity basketball cheerleading program for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five season, and I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
And that should be it.
All right. Buildings and grounds?
Buildings and grounds, A, information, the buildings and grounds committee received school facilities request from the following district activities. One, SCSD Wellness Committee, health screening in the elementary cafeteria from six-thirty AM to nine AM on January twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Two, NHS, American Red Cross Blood Drive on January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, from nine AM to two PM in the high school gymnasium. Three, Sullivan County High School Guidance Office, presentation of Camp Cadet for seventh and eighth graders on January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from nine AM to eleven AM in the high school auditorium. Four, Sullivan County High School Guidance Office, PFEW presentation for tenth and eleventh graders on February fourth, two thousand twenty-five, from ten-thirty PM to two-thirty PM in the high school auditorium. Five, High School Guidance Office, Sweetheart and Heroes Presentation on March twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, from eight AM to three-thirty PM in the high school auditorium. Six, Sullivan County Baseball Open Gym in the high school gym, weight room, hallway, and the elementary school gym for baseball conditioning and weight training on Sundays, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, through March second, two thousand twenty-five, from ten PM to two PM. B, administration recommends approval of the use of school facilities requests received from Space 4B to B LLC for behaviors of mindfulness, breath work, and sound mindfulness activities on February fifth, two thousand twenty-five, and February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five in the elementary gymnasium, or open available space from four PM to five PM. I so move.
Second. Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
C, Buildings and Grounds Committee was presented with an update on the Public School Facility Improvement Grant, Elementary Riff Project. And that's it for other support.
Thanks. Curriculum?
Item A, the curriculum and student activities committee recommends approval of an educational planning contract with BLAST IU seventeen. If y'all remember, this is for the literacy work that the district's going to be doing. And I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Item B, the curriculum and student activities committee recommends approval of an agreement for training services from the Pennsylvania College of Technology for the Advanced Manufacturing Pre-Aprentice Program, and I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Item C, the curriculum and student activities committee recommends approval of Joseph Smelko as the mentor for Kevin Gorman for two full school years across the second half of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year, and the first half of the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school year, with pay prorated accordingly. And I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Item D, the curriculum and student activities committee recommends approval of a use-of-funds agreement for IDEA Section six nineteen with BLAST IU seventeen, and I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
And that's all.
Thank you. Personnel?
I make a motion to combine A through D.
Second.
Any questions on specifics? Motion to take A through D, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Item B, administration recommends the addition of Jessica Templin to the list of approved event staff workers, and I- Item B, administration recommends the addition of Jessica Templin to the list of approved events staff workers, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Administration recommends the approval of job description for a security guard, part-time position, and I so move.
John, did you have any issues with that?
No, no, it's fine.
So that, that kind of put what you had been provided earlier, and then, you know, we sent that separate as well, into the format that our other job descriptions are in. So, and like any job description, that can be changed at any, anytime.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright. Um, policy?
Uh, the Policy and Procedure Committee recommends acceptance of the following policies for the first read. Policy one, one, three, and five, independent education evaluations. Two, policy two eighteen, student discipline. Three, policy two twenty, student expression dissemination of materials. Four, policy two, two, seven, controlled substances paraphernalia, and I so move.
Question? Did we get clarity on that question?
I looked at it, I looked at it, and I cannot find any definitions other than what we said, um, what's delineated in the policy. There's, there's no, nothing else that makes those, a definition.
So it's kind of up to whoever to make a determination if it's mandatory reporting or non-discriminatory?
I, I would say, yeah, if, I mean, I would advise that if there's a question about it, then you report it, or you at least consult me.
Okay.
Can I add just something to that, Scott? Uh, when there's investigations, Officer Reeves is part of the investigation, and he is a police officer.
Right, but it's not a question of that, it's, it's that, written in there says discriminate, discriminate, you can decide if it needs to go or not. And that's, what's the definition of it? Which ones are, which ones are mandatory, which ones are not mandatory?
What I'm saying is, he's involved in-
It's too vague of a policy in my mind. It should be cut and dry. That wording should be cut and dry. There should be no questions.
Um, Scott, which one was that specifically?
Student discipline.
Student discipline.
Can we, can we table that for further discussion?
So, 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 Gabe, I know we have a, a motion out, I was kind of waiting until we had the, the second discussion. But I would like all forward in policies, I would like the explanation of all four, what updates, all justification, bits of that.
You trailed off at the end.
Uh, just, just understanding what changes have taken place for everybody before we understand, grasp for clarity on this topic.
I mean, I, I'm gonna suggest we entertain a motion to table this topic until further clarification is, is met.
Second.
Can we, um, the independent education evaluation, was there a particular question on that, Anthony, that, that you had, or maybe Randy could explain?
I was gonna guess if the policy and procedure committee's not be recommending all the policies that, uh, you're fully aware on both the administrator side and the committee side of what you're speaking about. I know we've read that, read them, but it's kind of said, some things can be easily interpreted, so from going forward with the policy and procedure, have the explanation of the change that can be recommended from the administration during this meeting, which is fantastic for, for, for.
Anthony, um, can I speak for a second about the independent educational evaluation? That one didn't actually have any changes to it. Um, the reason that that one came before the board was because we're doing our special education monitoring next month, and it just hasn't been reviewed in a while, and they'll look for that when they come into the monitoring. I'm not proposing any changes to what's already there. Um, but they just want, they just want, you know, to know that I reviewed it to make sure that we didn't need any changes. I'm not proposing any changes in the way that we do it now.
And Dr. Dr. J, why don't you hit the nail on the head? Some of these are very, uh, I don't wanna say remedial, but they could be just a quick explanation of, hey, these are reviewed, no change made. Uh, Doug, you and I will see policies come through so many times, but it's just, uh, some, uh, you know, instead of saying super intended, it will say district director, things of those nature. But just having it fully explained, I think, uh, going forward will have everybody on the same page on how our policies are gonna be executed.
So given-
Yeah, I had, I had provided both the old and the new policy for these, and I had pulled out the two thirty-seven, the electronic devices, um, back to committee. So I don't have an issue with, with two eighteen, two twenty, two twenty-seven, and two thirty-seven. Um, just going back to, I mean, I'm in no rush to, to review those, so, I mean, they could go back to committee.
Yeah, just given what Randy said about one thirteen point five, this is also first read, so that means we have to look at it again next month, right? So I, I think we should keep that one moving, Anthony.
Yeah, Doug, so what I was thinking of doing is we do have a motion in a second to table item A, and then I would like to, you know, we will continue with me making a motion, uh, to add to the agenda, policy one thirteen point five for first read, um, if that works for you guys.
Sounds good.
So, right now we have, um, motion in a second to tables, policy and procedure item A. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Can you remind me who made the, the motion in the second for the tabling?
I did the second, but then we, we didn't go back and throw one thirteen back into it.
So Anthony made the motion to table it, and then, okay.
But did we just table all four?
We did.
Okay, okay, I got it, I got it.
Procedurally, I don't think we should table one thirteen point five, because then we're adding something new.
Anthony's gonna add it back in here.
Yeah, I, I, let's just table, if you're gonna table, A, two, three, and four, if that's- And then just throw on the-
Well, well put, I like it that way. So we have on the table for a motion, and I move on, I got A, I got one, policy one thirteen point five, and I so move.
Okay, so motion by Anthony to take A one, second by Joe. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I believe the Policy and Procedure Committee recommends approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six school hour, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
And item C's information was the, the Policy and Procedure Committee provided, policy two thirty-seven, electronic devices for review and discussion.
That's because there's so many different permutations of, of how it's suggested to do that. So like, if you look in that, like I said, the, the first block is, do you wanna eliminate cell phones completely? Do this. If you don't, do this, and then you have these conditions. So, I, it, that just needs a thorough ringing out in committee uh, to determine what the school district actually wants to do.
And that is all for policy two.
Anthony, can I ask, are we gonna do like a separate committee meeting, or you wanna do this at committee of the whole next month?
Uh, I, I would like this as a committee of the whole. Uh, reason being, um, it, it's a, as a policy that already exists, so I think it's probably, it's going to- Maybe we should really think about how I'm gonna phrase this, I apologize. Uh, I, I would like everybody up to one, one, first, coming up, uh, all, maybe.
Okay.
Sorry? So, so you're, you're clear, Lance, on, you're good?
I think I have everybody, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, if nothing else, we'll move to transportation. Transportation committee recommends approval of an additional, of an addition to the list of approved parent drivers, and I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Can I make a, a comment here about transportation?
Sure.
So, you know, you all got my message about, about delay, and we did have a couple buses that had problems this morning, so, yeah, even with them, uh, going out and starting buses, you know, it's, as they're en route, where they, you know, started having issues, so. Um, you know, our fuel is treated, um, you know, we provide a mix, and then the bus drivers are also doing that, but when it gets seven, eight, nine, ten degrees below zero, you just have problems with the, so, um, but fortunately, you know, everyone's in. Uh, Chris has a heating system working, he worked through the weekend, um, issues we're having out there, you know, um, um, you know, so we have a safe, clean, warm environment for all of our students, um, so.
Thank you all for that.
Thank you all.
Yeah, the same thing tomorrow, um, you know, um, it'll be delayed tomorrow as well. I think the only school in the northern tier that didn't was Canton. But it's the extent of our transportation limits is really our issue.
Yeah, I, I looked at the weather hour by hour, and I'm like, wow, it didn't really warm up much, but it did get a little bit.
Yeah, I think it wreaked havoc on a lot.
Ten, ten, ten degrees at pickup time is still cold.
I, I mean, I would, just to comment on that, I, I would say that the communication on those type of things is pretty quick and efficient. I mean, we have an email, you get a text, you get an email, you get a phone call.
You probably all got that phone call.
Sullivan County was funny.
Yeah, that, that is the limits of AI, because I always-
South Carolina.
Yeah, I always read the messages, but if you use a text to, to voice, AI takes some liberties, and it sits out, I was like, you gotta be kidding.
I, I totally lost the bus number, so I was laughing, but I just wish you had South Carolina's weather.
My new procedure is you let it go to voicemail, because then you don't, you can listen to it again.
But, but we started sending texts too, and I think that, that has helped.
It is super.
Yeah, I got all, got all three within a matter of minutes.
When we're trying to like call parents for other reasons, because they'll, you know, like, their voicemail, or like, they'll answer it and nobody says anything.
Yes, guilty.
Cause I learned the hard way, cause if you, if you pick it up, and then you miss it, you're like, damn it. But then you get the email and the text and everything, so that's like my new mode, but, yeah, usually it's because-
People ask her, and she'd be like, what? Because they think it's a recording.
Yeah.
Oh, no. This is yesterday, and didn't answer it, and hello, you've reached, they were like, I'm like, this is really me?
Yeah, cool, appreciate it. Yeah. Eric, do you have any things?
No, just congratulations to, uh, Caleb Edford, for shooting the, Cole Wade, nineteen people, FBLA, and all the students, and his all the fans, and, and stuff.
Thanks. Anthony?
Uh, yeah, one, one, I, uh, raised a question about it earlier, and, uh, you know, I think, I don't wanna, just, I don't do it very often, but I, I think I speak for the entire board. You know, our, our hearts and thoughts go to the Rory family, throughout the life of this thing. And, uh, you know, there's GoFundMe pages during this time, I encourage anybody who could help, this was family such a hard time. It's great, appreciate it. Uh, when I first got on the board of Sullivan, and I saw Mr. Rory in the school, it was nice to meet him on the face. So, prayers and thoughts to the family.
Thanks. Joe?
I echo what, Anthony just said, uh, it's, he had a tragic loss there, lost, uh, his fam, him and his family lost their home, lost a wife, mother, and a child. Uh, that's a lot to lose in one fell swoop like that. It's just, and, uh, the Buildings and Grounds Committee has meeting, uh, next Tuesday.
Thanks.
I echo that, Ashley was an amazing person, great friend, so I, my heart goes out to them.
Uh, yeah, same. I think it, um, it puts things, it puts life into perspective when you're mad because your car won't start, or because you can't get out of your driveway, or, you know, whatever issue or problem, it's, it's, uh, very miniscule when you put it in the perspective of what the, that family is going through, so, yeah. Um, I, I echo the same, and I think that, um, it was really great that the district actually communicated some of the things that could be done, like with the GoFundMe, and I, I think that, uh, it gained a lot of traction, seemingly in a quick timeframe, to help them out, probably no, no amount of money available in, in the world would change what their perspective is, but it, it certainly was, um, was, it was good that the district, uh, did communicate to a lot of people to, for immediate assistance, so, thanks for that.
Um, of course, you know, I reiterate that, and our prayers to them. Um, also, I wanna take this time to just recognize all the hard work that you guys have been putting in the last couple months. Um, there are a lot, it's been a lot of traction in a lot of different areas, and I think you guys are doing a great job.
Yep, thank you.
Um, I echo everything that's been said here. Um, I also wanted to offer, uh, one more round of congratulations to the students who were here earlier. That really is an amazing achievement, and I love that we're recognizing them in a public space. Um, so, once again, congratulations there. Um, just before our meeting, I sent out a summary to y'all of what we discussed in the comprehensive planning meeting last week, just wanted y'all to have some visibility. Um, something I was, and thank you to, uh, there's some pamphlets down here, if you're interested to learn more about the responsive classroom work, um, that we're gonna look into. Uh, thank you Lynn for bringing those extras, uh, so people could look at it. I was just gonna ask if there is an ideal time to have a curriculum committee meeting, where maybe we could get perspectives from more board members? I know we're on a tight timeline with the first draft.
I can speak for Doug, but will you have gave Advent teams meeting dates with the conference, and then the faculty, and so we have, I'm very nervous.
Yeah, that works.
Or even like the time that we want to-
Because that still gives us a chance to make changes or updates.
Yeah. You would have a lot of substance to the rules of that.
Yeah, okay. Great, I'll follow up to get something more specific, but that's really helpful to start. Thank you, that's it.
And the experience.
Oh, yeah, thirteen, okay.
Scott?
I just thought some prayers to the board of family, and my son and daughter, the numbers in when they went to elementary school, so, so, really tough situation for them. But also shout out to the, uh, uh, elementary and high schoolers with the awards, uh, great job, and, uh, and then, uh, congratulations to FBLA, and the, uh, and all the, uh, uh, week of, uh, the sports, uh, weekly athletics. Congratulations to all of them as well, uh, great job, uh, coaches, team, teachers. Thank you all.
Thanks, Scott. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
So, um, Lance has, uh, one item, we were talking about the code lighting.
Yeah, we can turn that off.